Okay, good evening. We all please stand on the end of page. Thank you for all that you've been doing.
Would you allow an attitude prayer?
Praise and honor the Father, and thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for this opportunity to be in Hancock, the chair of the council and the citizens of this fine town. Lord bless our evening here at the seating. Give each one of the safety directions of travel. May we honor the police, you, and all the U.S. and the United States. Amen.
Hallelujah. The United States of America, and to your republic, for which you stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and thanks to the mayor and the council for hosting our meeting this evening. You heard him? Well, thank the mayor and council for hosting the meeting. We're going to be here for Washington County Council this evening. And what we'd like to do is just start out with the mayor. I saw the mayor here earlier. There he is. And we would just like to hear some comments from yourself as well as your council.
Thank you, Austin. It was a great comment. I appreciate it. And we have you know where you think it's good, and there's, I guess, the good tip where you live, plus send a message. We've been appreciative of being in the town. Just want to let you know a little bit about what's been going on in town recently. We were really excited over the weekend. We had now five days came to Hancock, and we had a lot of people working down at Paul's house and up at the Little Snoll program. That's pretty clear out. They created books that makes town look real good for tourists coming in. We have, as you know, we've got Harst, the marijuana facility. They're just back up to a full employment where they were before. They had a little, you know, the state sort of shut things down a little bit, slowed things down a little bit, so their employment dropped. They're back up where they were before. As far as Lanko Pendleton, the chief, they were about 10 employees from where they were two months ago. Things are rocking and rolling there, and I'm sure that the commission keep it for you in a little bit about Lanko Pendleton. We've been working here in town on a promise program with the college tuition for community college and vocational rehab, or, no, sorry, vocational training. We'll still work on that a little bit. And thanks to the HCC and the great county committee for helping us out with that. We're working on library progresses. We've been working with the convention visitor bureau encouraging visitation in Hancock with recreational opportunities. We would like to work a little bit more with you guys at the Department of Business Development. So, maybe you can have that come by. We could hear a little bit more about our hack program a little bit later, but it will pay the attention.
And very proud of her. She's worked real hard. She's currently working on her doctorate degree and loves teaching, loves teaching and worshiping for the county. And just absolutely thrilled that she's coming here giving that honor. Congratulations to my sister. Another thing I would like to report on, I did attend a U.S. cycling planning event meeting with mayor and our fine staff, and it's an honor to have the U.S. cycling choose Russian McDevitt Merrill over San Diego, California for 2018 and 2019. It's, as was clear, the sacred destiny. It's an honor, it's a privilege, and it's up to us to shine. And with that said, I think there's a number of tremendous challenges. Using a clear spring area for the one, and the other, I guess, main race is a zero in around 67, fair outside of Boons Bar, and Merrill's big league for really racking their resource adjuster to get that meeting to kind of figure out how to go make that work. Particularly, they want to block all traffic around 67 starting at 5:00 and 40:00. And I see right in the back there, Shane, their head. That is a major, major commuter route from that part of the county. And I guess we have to keep in mind, we beat out San Diego, California, so that's the good news. The bad news is we got to figure out how to make it come to fruition. So, we've got two months, and we're sure this community will rally somehow or another to pull it off. Hats off to everyone that's involved in this, you know, doing these, a lot of ingenuity and brain power and late night sleepless nights that have to come. So, we'll try to keep it going, you know, try to attend any future meetings we have. And it is very important. So, thank you for that.
Mr. Beamer?
Yeah, as Commissioner Klein alluded to, there was a groundbreaking ceremony this morning at the Brooks House in Hakers Town, and we in Hancock, that name, Officer Kevin Simmers was a police officer here in Hancock, and he gave a really heartfelt speech this morning for those of us that attended. And today was a bittersweet day for him. I think we all have him in our prayers today, and going forward as that project unfolds, I think going to be a great asset to our community and the mission that it has. And as Mayor Spahn also mentioned, on Saturday, the CNU now trust came to Hancock, or, because many towns belong to CNU now, but they came to Hancock on Saturday for cleanup day, and then keep in Hancock, the mayor's, the council was present, and Ross Cook, another eminent citizen here in Hancock, helped to bring about some, I believe, 62 volunteers in the area to come and help clean up the town. That's a great asset that we have here in Hancock, or enough in Hancock. I think maybe I took advantage of having CNU towns to just drive a bike or go for a walk, but it's a great asset that we have that covers our entire southern border in Washington County. So, it's a big asset to the county. We're fortunate to have it here and to have volunteers like that to take care of it. And just a comment on the mayor's remarks about more involvement with the local economic development commission in the county. I was speaking with the business owner not too long ago here in Hancock about an idea with microloans. And microloans, that's a topic that our E.C. committee has taken up recently, and our economic development, our capacity, Lewis got back with me earlier this week about a safety program for microloans as well. Loans as small as $5,000 that can be used by businesses for whatever reason they might need. Sometimes not that small, might be hard to use bank loans for, or economic development centers might be hard to come by, but it would be a safe program that allows loans, small loans, to customers, to borrowers that might not otherwise meet traditional or requirements. So, that could be a good thing for small towns across Washington County. And... Okay. One, I think, we started a tradition last year here in Hancock, where whenever we had our evening municipal meetings, we like to recognize someone in that town for the work that they've done. And we like to reach out to the town mayor and council for an idea through Tom. We love them on the internet, actually. And this evening, we are recognizing Tom Mazzone, a teacher here in Hancock. He's very well known. He makes the first page of the Hancock News quite good, Airway Mail as well. And this was written about Tom, so let me read this, and then I'll invite his students up to accept the award. The board of county commissioners is pleased to honor Mr. Tom Mazzone for his dedication to the students of Hancock. And you might ask if he's being honored. Why doesn't he care? Well, in typical fashion for Mr. Mazzone and his commitment to his students, he is with his FFA students as we speak at the national land turkey competition in Oklahoma. So, he's working very well. So, to accept this award on his behalf, we have some students here, Trevor Naylor, Caitlin Kovach, and Billy Thomas. And just prior to here, he's been being a teacher in Hancock. He has accomplished what many of us struggle for that he's achieved, because many teenagers are excited about learning. You guys are very excited about learning. And as I said, I was at a recent Washington County Farm Bureau event, and I believe Hancock was the only school that had a full tape of FFA students. You guys are ready to be watching. He has qualified students to participate in national and local competitions, and has brought upon at Hancock High School and prizes to students. Mr. Mazzone has been recognized by the National Association of Agriculture Educators as an outstanding young teacher. And he helps students learn about many things, agriculture, engineering, construction, and even raising chickens. I know a few of your classmates have been pretty successful with that. Mr. Mazzone has also given back to the community at heart in teaching other teachers about brain grading. He has represented Western Maryland Agriculture, our own Maryland Department of Agriculture Secretary, Joseph Barlow Felder, during the recent visit to Hancock High School, that was worth twice by the county of Hancock. So, the board of county commissioners has a certificate. It was like sort of a permission, so you can take this back to the classroom, do it to him, maybe it's an extra credit. And that says in recognition of their commitment to education excellence in the county of Hancock, we have the board of county commissioners, the Washington County, give our commendation for engaging students in the agricultural program and the FFA program. The board sincerely recognizes your outstanding teaching, community service, and dedication to the county of Hancock. So, let's see the picture here, and we'll turn the other commissioner up for group check.
Would you like to say anything about Mr. Mazzone, or if your parents are with you? I'm sure they needed him pretty here, but I know they appreciate Mr. Mazzone as well. If you'd like to raise your marks.
He's done a lot for us as a school. He's very warm.
He's done a lot for him, he's done a lot for the school, and he... Before I found out he was leaving, I, um, I should, who wouldn't be there, I had full, because I probably didn't take him to Hakers Town, I had full things coming back, thinking he drove me up the block from that evening and finding a way to fill the rest of my schedule with his gosh, all day long. His love for Iger Golds, but he even sold me with his classes, it just, it just makes me so happy, and he's just done so well. It just really makes me happy.
I'm with you from again, so that was a big school difference in the science. And I was into more of the music, the percussion classes, and at first I wasn't really into it, but I, he helped me really love it, and I really got into it, and now I'm going to complete it, genuinely.
Great. Well, thanks. Thank you. Also, again, thank you for this meeting this evening, and our historical advisory awards once in a day. We gave out three awards, and of course, the mayor and his wife are in attendance, as well as Saint Clair, our former council member, and I remember, he has a wood brass group, and he's always been all, asking about events that he, that he played at, and so forth, thought he would love to do something for Washington County. So, we're hosting in the government this week, so I thought maybe we'd get the information from the mayor and each other, and maybe they can provide some wood brass to meet up. So, we'll get that information from the mayor and see if we can recruit for you. Also, this past weekend, I had an opportunity to attend the Mrs. Merrill Jr. event, and one of our good friends, that was, you know, rules from all over the state, and walked here in Washington County, and there, and very polite, man, really, came up with this night, this, the elected officials and all the adults that came to participate, or not participate, but to watch. And then suddenly, they had the final, there at the Merrill, so, well, that was a great, great event for Washington County, and I've had to take a little break of all of this.
Do you agree with the destination, or do you think it correct?
I said it was, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, so that was a great event for Washington County. Also, today, I'm sure the ministers moved forward with the bid awards for the Merrill Theater, so some great things are going to be happening in the downtown areas down. I think the governor scheduled it commended as June 2nd. I think that would be the official groundbreaking, and so there's going to be some great things going on in Washington County, and, uh, what I'd like to accomplish is to always support the next project forward. And also, I'd love to tell people about, I don't know, venture the fight, set it going around the county of Hancock here, and see if, if your calls are best, and see if the ministers are interested in supporting another game to that effort. Yes. We started this project, it should be a free project, and we was hoping to get 22 payments, but it turns out the people in Hancock are really into their veterans and into honoring their veterans, and right now, we're up to about 136 people at versus banners. Now, I've got to stop them now, because we're running out of space in Hancock. But the bids come in, and the bids come in, I would be talking to the committee. And I don't want to end the project, but, and I hate asking you guys for money, but I would like to ask for your help. I know you gave us $10,000 before, and, and I'm not going to be mad at you, I would like to ask you for $10,000 more. And I know this will be the last time I ask you for money. I'm getting a nomination, I'm getting a reputation that here comes money, that's odd. Because in a small town, when you're on a committee, you have to ask everybody for money. And the last month and a half, that's all they've gone is asking for money. But it's for a good cause, the people are excited in Hancock, and again, I'm asking you if you would help support us with that effort. Well, one project, I think, I never knew, Mr. Klein, myself, and some, I apologize to that, to World War II, yes, it was about what, that's what World War II, and I'm sure everybody sitting here has came with plans, that will affect us, and what I want, what I honor, is that to the community. And I know I could support that, and I understand the commissioners want to, they're interested in supporting something, and I think we'd be $10,000 next time. You sure? Yeah, $10,000. Yes.
I'm not ready to just, I can make a commitment. The Vietnam veterans in Hakers Town have fallen short $75,000, and they need to get a bond bill, and I know they're going to want more money from us. I don't know how many people we should give a second time to, so I'd like to, not against it, but I would like Tom to think about it and see where our funding source would be.
I understand completely.
That's not easy for me to say, so...
I just know Hancock has never, really asked for a whole lot from Washington County in that, or I don't have any problem supporting $10,000, and this is just how, how it is.
I'd like to make you see the funding mechanism.
What do we have? What'd you say we have?
We're continuing to get $29,000.
That's one area where it could come from. Do you know, Ross, with the library set to be finished later this summer? And I know the library is forward funding our portion of the $1 million. If there's any project savings in that project, does that come back to us, or does that go to the library?
At this point, as you said, we'd see that it could be a different fund, because the library is going to drag it down, so at this point, it's not, it's not going to happen.
So, how is the contingency fund ever replenished? Okay, so when will it be replenished?
Okay.
Okay. What's up to you all?
Well, I think your contingency runs year to year, so you might want to wait until the person here, first, you can't budget for the contingency fund, that's, that's one of the criteria to the contingency fund.
So, when we say it's replenished year to year, this year or calendar?
July.
So, we have money in there now, two months till the end of this year. Could we take money out of the contingency fund? Will you even demand a balance of your finances? When you start projects? Well, I'm going to have to ask the mayor, because we wanted, the only way we could get a lot of memorial value is to get that to bed, and I don't know whether the town, I'm sure, I'll get it up from private donations, and I'd ask, and our meetings more, and, but the sooner the better. I'm not, you know, if you can't do it, you can't do it, and I understand that, and there's no ill will in that, I mean, truthfully. I, I just was hoping that you could do it. So, that's, so we could get it. Is there a potential submission perhaps, has we done an application from Mr. Perry before? Perhaps I can, Susan began to contact him, amend that application, so we have all the numbers, the figures, and we can maybe keep an eye on the contingency fund, see where we're at, maybe when the time is right for it. If you're ready for a quick decision, if you're ready for a quick...
Let me see, this, I mean, this has to be a question of trust. You know, if the council, if the commissioners' intention moved forward with that at some point in time, in a reasonable period of time, I think the town will move some funds around and get the budget underway, and, you know, we certainly are very supportive of it, we want it to happen, so that's something you have to think about that if you're trying to... I also support that we could, if I'm better than that, I mean, we, if they actually practice, but I would, we all have a master, my vote would be the intention, and if I'm better than their thousands, well, they struggle to do, they, they feel heartbroken that they once again have forgotten my job, and I'm not getting a bond bill, so that's why I'm pleading for that. No, I, that's, that's very, I mean, the town's, we took $25,000 in this already, and it was, and, you know, you just be laughing, man, doesn't it, you're laughing, I know where it's at, but we're well, we're well in work with you guys, so we'll try to make this happen.
So, I would, uh, it's something, I would be moving forward, so they got to make a decision, you want to like... I would support it tonight, and I would give a day inviting... The governor of Hancock, what?
No, I wrote the starting fund on the $18,000, $75,000. Maybe we should award them the money it was.
I, I, before they come in, and he's had a request, so I'm supporting, here's a request tonight, I will have no problem supporting, we have no request, but I would support a request to see whether, uh, county, mayor and council request. I support the town's request, and I would also support the, you know, the request that I haven't heard from yet, but we know they need the money, so I would support it.
I'll go be grateful, by the way. Thank you.
Okay, have a motion, you second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, any further discussion? All of you gentlemen, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Ouch, for, okay. Okay, now, given... Thank you guys so much. I really appreciate that. I really mean that, I really appreciate it.
I think it was kind of wonderful when the library opens in the evening, the veterans' library, and the veterans' banners.
We have one of the greatest monuments in the county, and it's really nice. Very happy. Thanks again, I really appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Klein. Last chance for questions or post comments. Okay, you have a lot of important questions to say, and we got these staff, and they did what I did for them.
I'd just like to share the famous maintenance program work for this upcoming year, as we have shown, that's, uh, some of the council members here and our county commissioners, which you see in green is a Hancock boundary, and yellow is our project for op mix asphalt in the land. That's just over six tenths of a mile, and then the red line on Pennsylvania, I'm talking about here in the Hancock area, is the chip seal, which will include a fox seal. Our project this year was awarded earlier this spring with $1.4 million for our chip seal project. We had about $2.8 million for op mix asphalt. That's a project that has 850 miles of road that we maintain every year. Again, this is just over a mile with six tents in the plan, early in the plan, for the overlay of op mix asphalt based on traffic volumes, conditions of the road, and then adds to the volumes lessened towards the Pennsylvania line, that's where the chip seal comes in, that's typical, like the county does on our projects. Nowadays, with the shortfall when it comes to the HUR highways, revenue money, we have to come with more cost effective measures, and chip seal is one of the ways that we have to have a maintenance treatment program to treat our 850 miles of road throughout the white circle, and truly reduce our time from getting from the road treated, say, in the year today, to the next time it's treated. So, with that, if there's any questions about that, this is upcoming work for the end of May. So, right now, we're looking at the third or fourth week of May for the project.
This is, this is wonderful, I really appreciate that, and we also have to give, we have a, because we have a connect to Main Street. If we, if we are able to acquire funds, sort of, to reach or whatever, would we be able to piggyback on your contract and push to go all the way to, to 44?
Yes, there's still time to, to piggyback if that was, and if there was any interest in conveying it, as you can see, the town of Hancock in the boundary, one more time, the county wants just one portion of that, the border, and then, then the interior, the rest is, is surrounded by the town, so if there's any interest in that also, but we're open to that, and, and the schedule would work as far as the operations and when they come in and work.
Yeah, I guess, kind of, as far as remains, I think that could probably just fine, it's waiting to spend, and work is done, and I think we'd do, we'll be happy, we talked this, or I think we might want to do something, if possible, pretty, pretty, yeah.
Last time, last time we were here, mayor, there was some consideration to conveying it over, is that something of interest?
Yeah, well, we're gonna...
Okay. Thanks so much.
So, I'd just like to thank the county and staff who were frequent in the track account. The track account was conducted during a period of time when the version stores in transition from tenants to full line, so it wasn't moving. Obviously, it wasn't getting a regular amount of traffic, that is normally what would happen. Business being closed down temporarily, so thanks for the track account, I think that had a, a slow acceptance.
Yes, about four to five thousand vehicles at the lower portion, again, that's our willing program, and then about 1,500 vehicles at the northern portion of that.
Kenny, any other, I'll say, I would report for my city, to any county.
We're talking with the Division of Construction, we're providing a quick update on the library construction. Their reconstruction was a bid contract in groundwork around September 20th of 2017. Today, foundation, circle steel has been installed in... Today, foundation, circle steel has been installed, and building slab has been poured. More framing, interior and exterior is about ninety percent complete at this point. Exterior finishes, the stem veneer and siding will be started soon. Right now, they're in the process of installing laminated wood roof deck. And the membrane roofing on the other portion of the building has started as well, so the building will soon be weathered in to the point where the tree installation will be able to follow right behind it, the electric plugs, the HVAC, some of the things that are weathered dependent for those installations have actually already started as well. A good portion of the underground site utilities, water and sewer have always been installed in preparation to install the gas, electric, and heat, the snow drainage utilities, and then the final grading and things like that will start once all that works completed. The winter construction and some material issues have caused a few minor delays with the schedule, but with the continued cooperation with the weather and the efforts of the contractor, the schedule should, the project should remain on schedule without any issues. So change of completion for the project per the contractor's schedule today is still scheduled for around mid-September. Contract completion by contract is actually October fourth, but they are scheduled to try to complete the project by mid-September. If you guys have any questions, they can come back and ask them, whatever. Provide any question in it. And again, we see this being a positive for the community, and see no reason why this project can't be completed on time.
Thank you. Any other staff from here at the scene who care to provide a report? County Administrator, what can I do?
Yeah, I'd like to thank these two gentlemen for coming to attend your evening meetings. And I think...
I called them down at the library to take a meeting.
I don't know if anyone's interested in hearing, but communication always seems to be the best, the best tactic to take. So Tim is our zoning administrator, and there is a cell tower coming out possibly this way. So would you mind just giving us a quick...
Yeah, I'm Tim Long, I'm Director of the Division of Communication and permitting, also the zoning administrator here. And I came along in case there's any questions or about this application. It's before the county's Board of Zoning Appeals tomorrow evening for a proposed cell tower up on the mountain up near Siding Hill. And it's a hundred and ninety-foot mon pole antenna. The zoning requires a special exception, which is a public hearing before the Board of Zoning Appeals. And you need to get that positive action by the appeal board in order to move forward with that. If you would like to comment on the appeal, you can, if you're unable to attend the hearing tomorrow night, which is down in Carytown, one hundred West Washington Street at seven o'clock, if you're unable to attend that hearing, and you still would like to make comment, it can be emailed to me, or to my zoning coordinator. And just send me after the meeting, I can give my card and email address. As long as you receive that by three thirty tomorrow afternoon, you can get that, those comments in the hands of the appeal board, and they will treat that just the same as if you were at the hearing, it doesn't matter.
Can I ask a question? Sure. Gate-shining Hancock News, what's the primary exception that the builder's looking for for that model or tower?
Well, it's, it's, well, it's a special exception in the zoning ordinance, so that's what they are, which requires the public hearing. Unlike uses under the zoning, which you can just move forward and obtain permits for, but this particular use, it requires the zoning hearing.
What's the exception that they want for what county zoning?
Well, they're not asking for a variance for anything, but actually, they're asking for a, it includes the special exception to install a hundred ninety-nine foot personal communication tower. So essentially, they're asking the appeals board to allow them, to give them permission to build this tower. And then we'll put that a variance from the one hundred, from the lease area, a hundred ninety-nine foot setback to fifty feet for their lease area.
Is it because that's a conservation, lease area, that's why they need the exception?
Cell towers are considered special exceptions in every zoning district in the county except for our industrial zone. It's up off of Mountain Road, pretty close to the, to the disruptive center up there at the top.
I'd like to recognize that we happen to be around Ogo here, it just happens to be in a pointy side of our Board of Zoning Appeals, so it'll be hearing that tomorrow. It's a lucky five.
Anything else, Senator?
I just want to say, let's get back to Hancock again. I have just served this place for about five years as a state trooper, a son of a Russian bird of Washington County. Primarily, we were here in Hancock, I worked with Dave Smith, but in fact, then he was in another capacity, and so was I, but it was a pleasure to come up. I told Commissioner Eifer that, I also lived in Little Orleans, just outside of mountain, for about ten years, so as I told Commissioner Eifer, I know some of the problems that the community faces here in Hancock, I've known it firsthand, I've seen it firsthand. So if there's anything that I can do to assist anyone, or just hand it over to the guy, you don't have to take it, you may call. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. That's lovely, we won't dispute that, nothing to say. Okay, that's been a long year, last chance for staff reports. And we introduce Ms. Grant again. Ms. Grant, introduce to Hancock.
You did the Hancock gig, Danielle?
No, my first.
Okay, Danielle is our Director of Public Relations in Markle, so...
Nice to meet everyone.
So that's how you got up here, because you've been here, what, four months?
Yeah.
Kind of live in the middle of the town.
Oh, sorry. Very strange, not too far.
And the foreground lots of the lost, and Miss Poe, and Miss Long, both. Thank you both from the same department.
Exits of this nation, have we since sixteen tried to participate?
I'll say something. My name is Missy Kovich, I lived in Hancock for twenty years. I have two kids who went to Hancock School. My son, Michael, graduated in June of twenty seventeen. As you may have heard, I'm sure, we're a little worried about our agricultural program at the high school, mainly because there was a staffing change that is taking our agricultural future to clear spring next year. We're very upset about that. One of the reasons I moved to Hancock twenty years ago, from, I'm from Buck Valley, Pennsylvania, which is five minutes across the mountain, because the school's so much smaller. Gave the kids a lot more one-on-one time, smaller classes, and I feel it was able, it benefited them to learn a little bit better. Made their friendships stronger, they're more like family. I met my daughter Caitlin tonight. She loves the FFA program, she admires Muzoni, respects him, all the kids do. There is a listening session on Thursday night up here at the high school with Superintendent Boyd Michael. We hope to have a full house to support this staffing change. We would like to have it reversed, and keep Muzoni in Hancock. He's one of us now, if you don't know, he bought a house out on Round Top Road. So he's a Hancock, he's a Panther, we'd like to keep him here. He is the heart of our FFA, the heart of our agricultural. He's the reason the kids take that class, they love him. They have a lot of respect for him, he's done a lot of good things in this town. We understand that you guys cannot change the school board's mind, but we would love to have your support Thursday night when we're addressing the superintendent about this issue. Especially Wayne, you're one of us, you're one of our boys. And Mr. Huskies, if you're from Little Orleans, you're one of us too. So if we can have your support Thursday night, we would greatly appreciate it. For the ag class?
Sixty percent.
I was wondering, out of that, all the population at school, sixty percent is enrolled in the ag program. That's huge.
The FFA, Mr. Muzoni created the FFA four years ago, four years ago. He's in Oklahoma with some of the kids now. They just went to competitions a couple of weeks ago, they got second place. In the board of that?
We got, we won all the categories in my fourth street fifth this year. Catering won, you know, we also won bottom line, and we won second, third overall, so.
It's a great program, the kids thoroughly enjoy it. My son, Michael, is very, he's a very laid-back young man. This program out of his shell. This program gave kids who weren't athletes, who weren't on the football team or played basketball, it gave them a place to fit in, and it connected all the kids a little tighter. They do fundraisers, they go to these competitions. Muzoni has no problem going to kid to decide if they're having a bad day, to talk to them, and they respect him for that. So like I said, Thursday night at six P M. is when the listening session is at the Hancock High School, and we would greatly appreciate some support from the county commissioners.
And what these kids are going to take away from this is lifelong lessons. As being a former FFA member two, this is what we want for our children. It teaches them pride, it teaches them integrity, it teaches them the values, and it gives them a background, they form strong leaders, and that's what we want from our children. And without Mr. Muzoni, not saying that our program won't flourish, we want to have the opportunity to have that in our community, because it is huge for our children. And sixty percent of the students that's at our school go to, are in those ag classes and stuff, you know, they're building, they're building a legacy, and that's what we want for our children, and it's important. So I think, you know, being able to teach them that, being able to give them the structure, being able to do that, it's huge for our children. And we have an eighth grader coming up into ninth grade, that's what, and Mr. Muzoni and Mr. Huskies, they do a great job with those kids, and they, you know, they're looking into that. And he's our youngest son, you know, he's looking forward to that, and so, you know, that's what they look forward to going to school, because our kids don't, you know, our kids are farm, farm kids, they don't play sports, they don't do that. This is what they do, so, you know, we, we just need the back, we need the support, and we don't feel like we're getting any of that from the board of education at all. We feel like this has been done, and we don't have, we have no control, this is out of our control, and this is our community, and that's what we're here to, we came here twenty years for the same exact reason. So we're proud to be in Hancock, we're proud to be Panthers, but we want this FFA and this ag program to flourish and for our kids to have a chance.
And I'd like to say, during permission Muzoni come to our school, he wanted to get middle schoolers involved, so when they step up a high school, it's nothing new. And it took him a while, he fought for a couple of years to be able to let your eighth graders step up, and, you know, and that's something that he wanted, and I think he's, there's only two schools in the state of Maryland that have a program for your, for your eighth graders, and suddenly he's one of them. And he wanted that in a bad kind of way, and that's where he's just, more and more kids are getting into it, and when he comes to our school, it's ag's the whole way.
Now, a lot of it has to do with the man behind the program, the man who built it from scratch. Because of these kids, he's so personable to these kids, and they respect him and admire him. He teaches them, they respect and admire each other, to build each other up. That's why we're really pushing for the staffing change to be reversed, so that we can keep him in our community, build that program a little stronger.
I'm confused, transferring him to Thursday, I was saying, and you wanted to hire another teacher?
Yes, which really upsets us, because if they wouldn't hire a teacher for Hancock, leave us with Mr. Muzoni and hire a new teacher for Thursday.
It's the way they went about doing it, and there was drumming, it was all around, we were losing everything, even the school, and they denied that, but, you know, they made the man good.
He, from the conversations he's had with people in the community, he's a Panther, and he wants to stay here with us, with job security, that he would be here for a while, you know, not a couple of years, and then be transferred out. We want him to feel confident that he's going to have his place here, and he's going to be able to build this program, and it's the great thing that it can be. We even have the backing of the town, the town council and the mayor with our FFA program, and not many communities have that, have that small-town feel, will stand behind the program of the local kids. And I think with, in today's world, with there's such a huge, you guys seen it this morning with Mr. Center's daughter, there's a huge abuse crisis. If we can give these kids something positive to build on, why not give them that? Why take it away from them? Thursday night, six o'clock, Hancock High School.
Can you speak to that in the capital of town? You are, you are very proud of the school, we're proud of all things the kids do. This ag program has really energized the kids that live in Hancock, whether they play sports or they don't play sports. And the thing is about ag, ag is part of STEM programs, we've been working with the Secretary of Agriculture, asking the kids what they were going to do, and some, you know, they want to be out of the house a ways. But then there are others who say, you know, I'm happy that what I've learned in ten years, I'm able to plant a garden, I'll know more about agriculture. They're putting engines together, learning carpentry, construction, recording plans, and learning how to do rants. This is a very unique program, and it has been built up, and it's something that the entire town is proud of. Now, you're right, I mean, it is, it is, we will survive, we will make, we will make this happen one way or another, but we don't have any understanding why this is happening. There is, there's no rationale to it. They say, they say they have people who are ready to step in the duck and be an ag teacher, that job has been open and pressuring for a while. Why all of a sudden, that's why they're taking it away? And another problem now is, he is, he's a school employee who's looking at his career, he's bought a house, he has commitments as far as his mortgage. And if I'm going to go up and ask him personally, did you request this transfer? It's not fair to ask him that question, because he's concerned about a job, he's concerned about what the consequences were, if he bucks, what the board is already going to have to do. And that's our thing, that's what the board is going to do. We are, we're, we're going to go down sooner, if that's what it takes. The town is fully, all of, all of councilmen are behind it, everyone in town is behind it, you'll see that on Thursday.
Oh, another thing that Mr. Muzoni has taught these kids with the FFA competitions is unlike the way the board is, not everybody gets a trophy. They earn those, they earn the pennies, they earn their trophies, they earn their medals, because they prepared for their competitions. He taught them that, he taught them how to prepare, he taught them what they needed to know at these competitions to win. They had about first place, that happens, but you come darn close, they come second. That's, that's good for Hancock, who's only had an FFA program for four years.
What's possible, what's possible to me is if he doesn't work yet, and we want to be replacing him up here, I guess, I don't understand.
We don't, we don't either.
It's part of, honestly, I mean, I don't want to start conspiracy theory, it's part of the bigger plan.
Yeah, there's something bigger. We don't, Hancock doesn't ask for much from the school board, and Lord knows, we don't get it. We just want our teacher to build our ag program, that's all we're asking for. And I don't think that's too much to ask.
Okay, six P M., Mr. to the Hancock Hospital?
Yep. We're hoping so, if you were an FFA number three, when you're blue and gold.
The office there, we're looking at the kind of, the raw covers presented, and...
My son will do that for us.
February twenty, twenty fourteen.
Yep.
It really is amazing, if you would just see the projects that our kids are doing, the different things, the hands on, this is really, it's a wonderful program, so, anything we can do, so, first thing.
Okay, any other citizens, I've got to anticipate the seat.
I'd like to say, too.
I'd like to say, why don't we introduce themselves?
I'm Valerie Oliver, I'm also a county commissioner. I was at that meeting, the mountain board meeting, and I left the hospital from where my dad was, and my sister so I could come, and I realized, I want to say, you guys were there, you put talking meant a lot to me, and after you laughed, I mean, pretty much everybody laughed, but me and another candidate were talking, and it was, it struck us, kind of in our way, because I was just very small, and I would be the same way. You gotta fight, and you are fighting, and that's the best thing to do, is to build and let, you know, Mr. Roy, you know that, you know, this is your concern. So if you are doing, you know, that.
We're hoping to get here on Thursday night, and hopefully they'll rehearse the staffing change. We're hoping to get this done Thursday night, and hopefully, they'll, they'll reverse the staffing change, because there's a new program here. We have a great, we have a great program that's being built, and we just want to see that continue.
I don't know if you might, or your children, and you're up at that, here, we're ten fifteen. Ten fifteen. Well, I think you're doing, you know, this, you know. Hancock, I really never got around Hancock, so it's, it's cool up here and see, and care, so.
We're welcome in Hancock.
Yes.
Okay, any, anyone else, have any comments, please? Okay, thank you, now you can motion to adjourn.